Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login call information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. East Hemphill Township public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure that has already been discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period. All comments should be directed towards the board. I would ask now that you join me for our first item, rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And now the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Up next is our consent agenda. The consent agenda are routine items that include minutes and invoices that require very little debate or discussion. With that being said, is there any questions or comments from the board in reference to the consent agenda?
Sir Chair, I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and B as presented?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Up next, action items, ladder truck loan.
We're going way too fast.
Sorry.
So the ladder truck that we ordered about two and a half years ago is going to be coming in likely by the end of October, in order to pay for that truck, which we have committed to do, is that we need a loan. The fire services fund currently has, I think, just over $900,000. We are suggesting taking $800,000 of that, plus a $1 million loan for 10 years. An interest rate of 4.87. It's a fixed rate for those 10 years, and it's through the, our bank, FNB.
Is there any penalty for early prepayment?
There's not.
So if we get a PIB loan or something down the road, we could possibly?
Yes. Asked the question, and the answer was, no, there's no penalty. Oh, I take that back. He said there's no penalty if it goes to a bank. Now, PIB loan, I'd have to verify that. If it goes to another bank loan, there would be a penalty. But if it went through a grant, I'm not sure.
There's no, there's no early payment if we pay ahead or we get ahead or anything like that?
No, there's not.
Okay. But yeah, we could verify that, just because we have other things in the future where we might take a low-interest loan on, where you might want to just roll this into it, too.
So is this something that needs to be done? Can it wait till the next meeting?
Unfortunately, because of the paperwork that has to happen after the ordinance is adopted, should happen tonight, so that we, because we have to get this submitted to Department of Community Affairs, so that they can approve the loan, the debt service for the township, so that takes all time. And it's cash on delivery.
When is the delivery?
We're not sure. Sometime in the end of October.
Are we sure on that? Because I thought it was going to be a little later, but are we sure that's going to be end of October?
Diane, that was the last date I had. Do you have an update on that? Or John, if he's online?
Yeah, they're still saying the end of October.
End of October.
All right, so...
How do you feel about waiting till the next meeting? Because it could be several weeks after that, before we get the loan docs and settlement through.
We have a letter of approval now for the loan?
Yes.
And is there, is there...
Can we make the motion just that we answer that question first, and we want that to be part of the, when we go back to FNB, we can make the motion to approve adoption of the ordinance based on?
Condition, no, no prepayment penalties.
Yeah. I mean, would that be okay with you?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Would that be a satisfactory solution?
Yes, I can find that out tomorrow. Yep.
Okay.
The advantage of prepaying is just saving the interest?
We, yeah, we've, in the past years, we've refinanced them over loans once interest rates come back down again. And there's, the PIB loans typically are below market rate interest rates, so you can get like a 1%, 1.5%, 2% loan, and a million dollars that will add up over 10 years.
Okay. All right, so let me run this by you gentlemen. So if we take a look at the motion that was in the packet, we would change it slightly to read, motion to adopt ordinance 2025.03, approving the borrowing of $1 million for a 10-year term at 4.87% for the purchase of a ladder truck, based on the confirmation that there will be no prepayment penalty.
So move.
Mrs. Schweitzer, before we continue, do you believe that's going to be satisfactory enough here?
He already told me there is a prepayment penalty if we switch banks.
Correct.
So the question would be if we switch it with a loan, or a grant.
A government, well, a government-backed loan, or...
Grant, or any other combination. Basically, as a straight, clear, no pre-penalty, no penalty for prepayment, regardless of source.
And the answer to that will be no.
Well, we already know, right? If we go to another bank and try to shop it, and the interest rate's lower, which I understand, they're protecting themselves, and that's fair. I guess the issue, and I'm where Mr. Russell is, if we want to, and we may want to consolidate some stuff and take advantage of other government-backed loans, like the PIB loan, in the future, we don't want to be hit with a prepayment penalty for that. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So if it's paid off either with grant money or any other way besides going to another commercial bank, we don't want a prepayment penalty.
Got it.
So maybe I can clarify this a little bit more. So based upon confirmation that there will be no prepayment penalty for a grant or government-backed loan?
Or accelerated payment by the township.
Or accelerated payment by the township. And so there was a motion by Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Second by Mr. Johnson. And before we vote on it, Ms. Schweitzer, do you believe this is going to be sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any comment or questions from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, we'll have the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Old Business, Fire Emergency EMS, we've been talking about that, as well as the 250th anniversary, along with the, the park at the corner of Nolt and Church. Is there any discussion on EMS services right now? How about from the 250th anniversary? Any discussion on that, or?
We had a meeting, we had a meeting tonight. We had a limited amount of resident participation, really looking to identify exactly the scope of the event that we can have. Again, I don't want to grant, we don't want to grant scope if we can't, if we're not going to get significant community support. So we're still, we talked a lot tonight about ways that people, organizations that we can approach for perhaps a captaincy on this event, as well as funding some of the event. So I think, I think we kicked around a lot of good ideas tonight, but we'll take it to the next step and our next meeting.
Yeah, and to add a few items, there were three members of the community present, as well as Tom, myself, and Cindy, but we would still be looking for leaderships. In other words, we haven't established a chairman or anything like that, so, you know, we would still be pursuing people in the community that are interested in leading the effort or working on the effort.
And we're also, and we're also going to ramp up our advertising approach on this, utilizing the merchandise, or perhaps in Facebook and social media, a little more aggressively than we have in the past, or so far, I should say.
Is the Township Newsletter finalized yet, Cindy?
Uh, yes, it's actually printed.
Okay, so it's that printing now?
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the audience regarding this matter? Any from Zoom? Hearing none. The park at the corner of Nolt and Church? I guess, are we continuing the discussion on the name, naming of that?
I think we are.
Okay.
Yeah, so the Parks and Recreation Committee, over the past several months, several meetings, we were discussing names for the, what we're currently calling the Nolt Road Park. And we have four names that we've been discussing, and we had opened it up to the community to email some names. And that, that one was Hemphill Park. So the, the five are Four Seasons Park, Indian Springs Park, Nolt Road Park, Supervisor's Park, and Hemphill Park. So I think the next step would be for us to discuss which ones are, are our favorites, and then get some community input, and then vote if, you know, if we proceed that way.
Okay. Did the, did either of you have a particular?
Or is it, Ron?
Yes.
I think everybody knows I do. I'm, I'm for Supervisor Park, mainly because I'd like to dedicate the park to the many men and women, past, present, and future, who serve East Hemphill Township as a supervisor, guiding our township, making it a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Much of what we do, we do at a very low cost for our, our, our community, not that that matters, because we're, it's basically a volunteer job, but we all work very hard. All of us here work very hard, and all of the supervisors that have come before us work, have worked hard, and I just think this would be a great recognition for, for, for those, as well as a carrot maybe out there for supervisor in the future.
Question, Tom, is it Supervisor Park, that's, or does, is there an S at the end of the word Supervisor?
There's no, there's no supervisors, there's no S on the park name. I feel you put an S on the park name, and it, it almost turns it into a possessive, and I'm not really looking, this isn't, this isn't our park, or the supervisor's park, this is everyone's park. But as I, as I said, it's dedicated to the people who have helped make East Hemphill Township a great place to be.
And my personal favorite is Indian Springs Park. And the reason I think that is, I like how in East Hemphill, there's precincts that have been named, I don't know how many years ago, but there's precincts, and I'm looking at them now, like Barcrest, Centerville, Cherry Hill, Chestnut Ridge, Friendly, Spring, Hemp Land, Indian Springs, and there's five more. And they, they refer to geographic areas of East Hemphill. And I, I can only assume, I, you know, like, another one, Mill Creek, Petersburg, that I live in, I can only assume like that, there's some historical meaning for each of those names. So the park is on the border of Mill Creek and Indian Springs, and the Four Seasons Golf Club used to be called Indian Springs, so I just like the heritage of that name, and, you know, I'd like to recognize that heritage by naming the park that will be in that area, Indian Springs, with an S at the end of it, Park.
Yes, I think, and I certainly agree with Tom, the supervisor is a good recognition for past leadership in the township, and, and certainly, that's been very strong over the many years, and I, I don't disagree with that, but for me, that area, growing up, you know, I was born and raised here, West Hemphill Township, lived in East Hemphill Township for the last 25 years, and I think of, I still think of the golf course as Indian Springs Golf Course, and that, that whole area to me is Indian Springs. And I've worked the voting district there as Indian Springs, so, kind of to Bob's point, that, that to me makes, it just fits for me, because of my, my background here, and it just seems like it would be appropriate to call it Indian Springs Park, because that's where it is. So I would be leaning toward Indian Springs Park.
Mr. Russell, do you have any comment?
I could definitely say I don't want Four Seasons, because I think it would confuse with the golf course right next door, having two Four Seasons in the same, with the same naming at this point. And I'm not too thrilled with just Hemphill in general, I mean, Black Knight or something, but not, not Hemphill. It's, I think that's a little bit too generic at this point. I guess if I had to lean towards anything, I would also lean towards Indian Springs at this point. I could see the merits with Supervisor Park. I could see the merits for Indian Spring Park, but I do like how we name our parks after either an individual or an area. Obviously, the, the springs underneath the golf course are what provide the water for most of the township at this point, so, there's actually a reason why it's called Springs, it's because of the aquifer we got underneath the golf course, so I would, I would lean towards Indian Springs.
I could accept both, but I would, I'm going to follow the lead of the gentleman that's been pushing this since he got here, and felt like this was an important park to develop, and put his heart and soul in it, and I'd say this would be your main achievement when you leave here, that, that something's happened here. And without a driving force, oftentimes, good ideas go nowhere. So for me, I would, I would lean towards Supervisor Park, and, you know, I could accept Indian Springs. So kind of divided here, looks like three to two. Do we want to decide this tonight? Do we want to wait on it with more public input? It seems like it's down to those two names at this point.
What did you, you had a, you had a plan on this, right?
Yeah, my plan, though, perhaps it's not necessary, was to, you know, us to rank, but it seems like we all picked one of two, so like, there's no point really in ranking them and picking between the two. So, you know, I'm certainly good with a motion to decide tonight, but if, if we gathered more input...
Whatever.
I can give either, I can wait, too.
It really, it, the ball's in your court, gentlemen, so what do you want to do?
Did, did we have input on, via email or anything from other than the Hemphill Park? Is that the only, that's the end?
That was the only other one we had.
Okay.
The other one noted, just for the record, was Elum Hur's, Elum Hur Park, but that was way too confusing with Amos Hur.
Too confusing with A. Hur.
A. Hur Park, right.
We talked about possibly naming some piece of equipment in the park itself, Ron.
But it hasn't been ignored, it's just, doesn't quite work out for this one.
Yeah.
Yes, and when Tom had first mentioned Supervisor Park, I thought that would be very appropriate for a pavilion in the park, where supervisors could be recognized, but I, at that time, I had felt that the Indian Springs was preferable to me, but recognizing supervisors in a different way in the future.
Why, why was the name changed from Indian Springs, or to Four Seasons?
When the golf course was bought by the township, I'm pretty sure that's when it happened.
I don't know why, but I think that's when it happened.
Yeah, so that's over 20 years ago now?
Okay.
Well, gentlemen, what do you want to?
Yeah, Tom, are you okay with like, making a motion, or would you like more community input?
Well, we haven't asked the community yet.
Oh, yeah. Good point.
So, all right, well, let's open it up to the community. Is there anyone here who has a vested interest, or has a, one opinion one way or another on this, would like to share it?
Nope. My associate's not here, sorry.
Sting, all right. Darren Linus, 1119 Stevens. Just for the record, I've run this by multiple people, as I've been out in the community over the past couple of weeks, and really, the only feedback was, of the four options, several people hesitated about Supervisor Park, because they felt, I think, in a word, and, and this is at first blush, not knowing any of the individuals involved, obviously, they felt like it sounded pretentious, like, oh, supervisor, like, what about police, fire, like, everybody else who serves the township. So just for what it's worth, I thought I'd add that.
You can just park it in the holder there, that's fine.
Anyone else?
Just, just a question, if I may. Why is it that you felt necessary to poll people about this? Just residents in the community?
Mostly just because, as I'm sure you've noticed, I've been hanging out here at meetings, and there aren't a ton of people in the community who attend, and so I just thought, I mean, there isn't too many other things to like, chat with people about, you know? Like, I don't know, like, yeah, a ladder truck, I guess, could be something need to talk, like, it was just, yeah, no, nothing, like, no overarching, like, value, or reason why, or anything.
Well, yeah, it's a well-run township.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, how about on Zoom? Is there anybody on Zoom that wanted to talk?
Police, no.
Okay. All right, so gentlemen, do either of you have a preference whether we do this tonight or want to wait? Tom, do you want to wait? Do you want to do it tonight?
Well, why would we wait? I guess, that's, that's the way I think about it.
Okay.
Let's clean this up, and get it, get it off the table.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt Supervisor Park as the name of the park on Nolt Road.
Okay, I will second that motion. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails two, two to three. Is there another motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to name the park Indian Springs Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of naming the, the new park, Indian Springs Park, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Like me.
So motion carries four to one. All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, up next, new business. Any new business? None. Okay. Any public comment?
Yes, sir.
Check. Yeah, there we go. Two comments. One is about a utility company. We phased out Comcast at our house, Glow Fiber came in, they put in the wiring, they came into the house, they did a phenomenal job. I'm sure you get lots of complaints about utility companies. It was an expert job, friendly job, personable job, and the quality's great. So just some feedback on a company that may be getting negative feedback. So Glow Fiber. And then the permits going door to door. I've been stopping people, and it's usually the same exterminating company that other people are having problems with, it's Moxley Exterminators. There's a guy who rides around on a hoverboard a lot of times, and the other neighbors are having the same thing. They ask questions, like, nope, don't have a permit, so what do we do? They're supposed to have one, but they don't, so, I mean, what do I do?
Call the police department, and we will come out and try and locate the individual.
Okay, I mean, that just sounds like a little bit drastic, but I just didn't want to like, you know, have a SWAT team coming in and, and, you know, jumping on somebody and like, you know?
It's no problem.
We also, maybe, just as a proactive, maybe, if you can email the township that, and someone can make a phone call to the company, and...
But it was like, you know, I, I was trying to get like, you know, I got like little videos running off, and other people have mentioned the same thing with the, you know, it's kind of cool, the little, you know, little hoverboard, so you can speed along to the next house really quick, but...
Fred, if you could maybe just email the township
Okay.
with the name of the company, then we can follow up.
Cool, thank you.
And Chief, yeah, I had a similar experience last week, and I, I know Diane Garber had contacted you about it, and I'm curious, has anybody, has, has any firms applied for a permit?
Oh, yes.
Oh, that, it's a common thing?
Yeah, we've had three or four different companies apply for permits, with, some of them had eight, 12 employees that were each processed through our, our new ordinance, so.
Okay. To refresh my memory, do we receive a fee when they apply?
$100 a person.
Oh, per, oh, good.
Per person, not per business. Per person, not per business, but per person, so, yeah, a lot of the, the three or four companies all had numerous employees that, that came and were processed through.
Did you sign in, Fred? Okay, we got it. Any other comments for like public comment period? Do we have any on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the manager's report.
Real short one this time. Centreville Road, Penn Dot is working on that dedication ceremony, probably late October, early November. Still don't have a date. Soon as we do, we will share that out with you. Route 72 and Lititz Road, the signal was activated as of 9/4. I haven't heard anything more from that. We do have, is, the project is considered substantially complete, but we do have a couple minor punchless items we're doing before we close the contract with BR Kreider.
I'm driving through that intersection a couple of times a week. I like it.
Works.
It's wonderful.
Good.
Yeah, agreed.
The zoning hearing board meeting for the cobook validity challenge, we have a new application from that group. The hearing is scheduled for October 13th at 7:00 PM. The Nolt Road Park is moving along. I believe the paving was completed this week, but we are keeping it closed until the paving has been able to settle out. The rec authority, I had hoped that they would select a financial consultant at their last meeting, but they decided to defer that to the October meeting, so that's still pending item. The R cap application for $3 million was submitted. The award could be year end or sometime early next year. There was really nothing happening on any of the stormwater projects. We can close the report unless there's something else. And we also have a budget scheduled, budget meeting scheduled for October 21st at 4:30.
The zoning hearing board, what's the composition now? Who's the active members on the zoning hearing board?
Right now, they're working with four members.
Did we call up our alternate, mother alternates at this point yet or?
I have to talk offline with the zoning hearing board about that and as well as the, the board of supervisors.
Who's acting as the, the chairman of the zoning hearing board now?
Mr. Hanson is the vice chairman and he's acting as chair.
Okay. So they haven't officially made any?
No. The, this would be their first meeting since Mr. Hur's passing, I believe, because they don't have one this month. It's just a special hearing and that special hearing involved quite a few hearings, so even having a new person would be difficult to add now. So there was no urgency to adding the fifth.
They're probably going to reorganize at some point in the future so that Mark can become the chair of the zoning hearing board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they did have one meeting I attended.
That's right.
Maybe last Wednesday and, and Mr. Hanson was the chairperson.
Any other comments or questions from the manager's report? Any comments or questions from the audience on the manager's report? Any from Zoom?
No.
Is there anything else tonight for the good of the order? Okay. Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:36 and we will not return. Thank you.